The Planning Commission, Ms. Ruth, would you mind calling and roll?
Certainly. Chairman Zarguni is absent. Vice Chairman Miller?
Here.
Commissioner York?
Here.
Commissioner Mendez is absent. Commissioner Salazar Garza?
Here.
Commissioner Munoz?
Here.
Commissioner Motahy?
Here.
Commissioner Lerma?
Here.
Commissioner Hedrick?
Here.
We have a quorum to conduct the meeting.
All right. We're going to open up the public comment on any public comments not related to any specific agenda items. Ms. Ruth, would you read the rules of decorum?
Certainly. Citizens will be allowed to attend and make public comments in person at City Planning Commission meetings. The public is invited to speak on any agenda item and any other items that pertain to the planning commission. Comments are limited to three minutes. If you choose to speak during this period, you will not be allowed to speak again when the specific item is being considered in order of the agenda. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there any public comment on any items not specifically called out as agenda items today? I see none. Moving on to the approval of absences of Commissioners Mandel, Munoz, and Lerma.
I'll make a motion that we approve the absences.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving on to the approval of minutes for the regular meeting of May 3, 2023.
Motion to approve minutes.
We've got a
I'll take the second.
Motion from Commissioner Motahy and a second from Commissioner York. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to consent items A and B.
Good evening, Commissioners. Marco Rosco, Planning 3, Planner 3 for Development Services. I'm going to be reading consent items A and B into record. Starting off with Platts, Consent Item A. The first plat here is number two, McNorton subdivision, Unit 2, is block four lots 12A and 12B. This is a replat of .52 acres. Items three through seven are final plats for Whitecap. Starting with Unit 1B, 12.86 acres. Unit 1A, 5.61 acres. Unit 1C, 4.87 acres. 1D, 11.33 acres. 1E, 21.24 acres. All plats are met the Texas Local Government Code and TRC, and staff recommends approval. Continuing with Consent Item B, new zoning. This is for Agapi Ranch. This is rezoning for property located at or near FM 43 and County Road 33. This is a rezoning from the interim FR Farm Rural District established upon annexation to the RS6 Single Family 6th District. Staff does recommend approval for this item as well, and staff can answer questions at this time.
Any Commissioners have any questions for staff? I see none. I'm going to go ahead and, oh, hold on. Commissioner York.
Thank you. On the zoning, I asked some of these questions earlier, but want to ask them again just for the record. I sent an email to staff, but this, on the item B8 zoning, can you explain the providing for a penalty not to exceed $2,000 and publication? What is that, what is that for?
That's the maximum penalty for any zoning violation.
Is there a zoning violation, or is?
No, no, that's part of the ordinance. So when they, anybody, so the city will adopt the code for the zoning RS6. So years from now, if somebody chooses to violate that RS6, the maximum penalty is the 2,000.
How does that, just unrelated to the item, but if somebody violates that, is that a daily penalty?
Yes.
Okay. The only other question on all of the, well, again, I submitted some comments, and some of them had to do with some little minor corrections and some things I thought need to be changed on the notes for the Whitecap Platts. Are those, if we approve today, how do we know that those are going to get updated, I guess?
The TRC comments were updated.
Okay. So we just, we don't need to approve as amended or anything because it's?
No, sir, that was included in the comment.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you for those comments as well.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions from Commissioners? If not, I'll open up the public hearing on items two through eight. If anybody would like to speak on any of those items, please come to the microphone now. I see none. With that, I'll entertain a motion or any further comments.
I'll make a motion, we approve items two through eight as presented.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to the Unified Development Code Update briefing.
Good evening, Nine Index and Mendez. We are going to have our consultants, Camero's Limited, present a refresher on our UDC update. And again, this concerns the zoning provisions. If you recall, the last time we presented to you, it was back in December of '22. And so we have two new Commissioners that have joined us now. And so what we wanted to do is, again, provide the summary of the proposed changes. And our memo indicated how we would like to move forward. Of course, we have another opportunity this month before Planning Commission to update you on any potential changes. And we'd like to schedule a joint Planning Commission-City Council meeting potentially in June. One of the council meetings in June, if all goes well. So with that, we want to turn it over to our consultants, and this is via WebEx, so we, or Zoom, rather. So we'll see if we can get our consultants on. One minute, please. There we go. Okay, Arista, we see your PowerPoint. Yeah, IT, we are unable to hear any audio.
I'm going to talk a little bit.
There we go. Arista.
There we go. You can hear me?
Yes. And Arista went ahead and introduced you. So again, we have two new Commissioners that haven't seen this presentation, so just wanted to let you know that.
Okay, great. Well, thank you all for having us here. If you can see, kind of, there's a couple of other Camero's folks here that have been working on the project, Christiane and Sierra Burquist. They're kind of the other floating heads as part of this presentation. And we're very happy to be here tonight, even if it is remotely, to present this update on the Unified Development Code. And as you know, we're working on really the zoning part of it and then the subdivision regulations. And this presentation and what we're moving forward this summer is the zoning component of this process. So we've been working diligently with staff and really looking at kind of everything that's been going on in Corpus Christi to create the UDC update of the zoning component. We've done some community engagement to this point. We started back in 2021. We had stakeholder interviews. We've done specialized meeting with the island and the downtown management stakeholders. We had a whole series of meeting with the Development Services Technical Advisory Committee, or the DSTACK, who reviewed all of these different components that you have before you. And we were there in December, and as a Chicago-based firm, happy to be there in December to really go through some open house sessions. We did some things on Facebook or YouTube, livestreamed the broadcast. We've also had a website up this whole time that has been kind of showing the iterations of these different documents. And we're happy to report people have been visiting that website and kind of taking a look at what we've proposed. If you saw us back in December when we were there at Planning Commission, a lot of this will look familiar to you. We pared it down a little bit to really kind of, because nothing, we haven't really gotten any feedback that anything that we were doing needed a radical change at this point. So just kind of an overview of where we're at with the zoning. Why are we updating? Like any zoning update, it's really looking at the different plans and policies that you've adopted and how we can help implement them through the zoning controls. It's modernization of the zoning controls, really looking at things that are desired, such as mixed use, quality of design, integrating those, addressing any reoccurring issues with the current zoning standards. I know one thing that drove everybody crazy in Corpus Christi was the names of the districts didn't align with, didn't align with what the abbreviations were. Happy to say we were able to very easily fix that part of it and make things more user-friendly by incorporating things like graphics and tables. And you'll see that throughout the draft documents, much like they were before back in December. We did a lot to simplify the residential dwelling types, and we're going to start with the resident, describe the different types of dwellings. And as you see in the residential districts, the types of dwellings that are allowed within each of those. It really kind of simplifies everything to understand what you can build and what those standards associated with it are. So looking at the residential, this has been refined to better reflect the character of Corpus Christi. And what we're looking at here are the single-family districts. We understand that there are things, kind of larger areas, such as the farm rural, the single-family estate. Again, that's 22,000 square feet in area. And then really looking at things that take on a little bit of more suburban-urban form. So the SF10, which is 10,000 square feet, the SF6, which is 6,000 square feet, and the SF4.5, which is 4,500 square feet. So really looking at the development patterns that are there and making things conform more than they have been under the current set of residential districts. We then took a look also at the multifamily, created standards for the two-family district, which really looks at single-family and two-family residential, kind of gradually building with a townhouse district, where you see single-family, two-family, and townhouse. And then two different types of multifamily districts, really kind of looking at the heights that are in place there. And that's really where you see kind of where these come into place and a little bit on the density, kind of the amount of square footage per unit that's required of the lot, not the dwelling unit size, but the lot size that's required. And you can see here, and we'll bring this up in a second, as we look at the height, we were also very sensitive to when these taller buildings would abut, single-family or two-family districts. So there's some transitions that happen, and we'll show you a slide on that in a moment, about when those things are abutting and close together to make sure that we're respecting kind of the scale that happens between a, say, a single-family district and a two-family district and a larger multifamily district. Also created the commercial districts. This has been one of kind of the bigger things that we've tackled here, really addressing the different characters that are in place. And in many cases, it's really integrating that ability to do mixed use. Because we saw that adopted in certain parts of the code, where you have a mixed-use overlay or bonuses for mixed use and those different types of things. So we really just wanted to build it into these districts. And kind of like you saw right now with the multifamily, the commercial districts build in intensity as well. So we start with the residential professional, low-intensity office with some residential mixed in, moving to the neighborhood office, which is kind of more of a mixed-use scale. You've got small-scale office buildings. You've got some residential that works well in there. To convenience commercial and then NC Neighborhood Commercial District, which really serve the nearby residential neighborhoods. You can see mixed-use development is allowed there. Moving into the CMU, the corridor mixed use. And to point out one change that you do see here, we did, after input we received following those December meetings, it used to just be a mixed-use district, so required commercial on the ground floor residential above. In this case, we allowed for multifamily to come in as well as part of the revision, acknowledging what really does kind of happen in these mixed-use corridor districts. Again, the RMU, the resort mixed use, a little bit more specialized because you're dealing with those more tourist-related areas. So you see hotels kind of work their way into this. Similarly, the RC Resort Commercial, variety of commercial activity, the types of commercial stuff that you need when you're water-oriented retail, entertainment uses. So kind of, it's kind of ups the scale from the RMU to finally the commercial core of the CBD. So really kind of the heart of Corpus Christi, the central business district, really allowing for multifamily and mixed use of the highest density and intensity to happen there. So you again, kind of see this ramping up. And again, that kind of font that's probably a little too small for you to read regarding these heights. Again, we've built in these transitions when they're abutting, single-family districts or two-family districts, to make sure we're sensitive to those areas that may be smaller in scale and kind of more sensitive to having a big building next to them. Finally, there is the GC General Commercial District. This is the one that's really oriented towards auto-oriented commercial activities. Major regional types of consumer base uses are located there. So it's really on these major arterials, allowing for this general commercial. And then the CC Commercial Compatible, this is retained from the current UDC, really looking at those areas regarding kind of where ACUs was and the military overlays, and if these are still needed. Eventually, these, we think, can eventually transition out. And the way the new code is organized, it's very easy to kind of take them out of the code at that time when it's appropriate. And this is kind of what I mentioned here, really looking at these height transitions. And they may be different for the different districts, as you saw there in the kind of very small font. We apologize if you can't read it. But really, this adjustment, if I'm very close to a single-family district or the two-family district, that I am kind of stepping my height up as I get further away to really create that sense of compatibility between the two different uses. There's been some other additional updates to the commercial district standards. One of these was the streetscape zone, which kind of floated out there in the UDC. We wanted to be very specific in its application. Much of it is very much the same as what you have now, but we've required its applicability in that commercial mixed use and the central business district. So there are requirements for creating that streetscape zone. We've also taken the uptown-downtown overlay and incorporated that into those areas that are not covered by the CBD or the CMU districts. Just keeping in mind that CBD, CMU, no parking's required. The streetscape zone is required, as we just stated. So this covers those areas that may not be covered by those, but we want to make sure have that proper transition of the uptown-downtown overlay into those areas of more intense mixed use. The industrial district really has just been clarified. So you have an L1 light industrial, so this is really those things that, industrial uses that don't have much impact. They're kind of really enclosed, you know, important to the economy of cities all over, and just making sure that we have a place for them. And then acknowledging things like the heavy industrial, where things may be a little bit more intense. They may be hazardous. They may have some noxious effects. So making sure that we've got those areas properly zoned as the heavy industrial. And again, you see the industrial compatible, the IC. This is the buffer between residential and more intensive things. And again, we think maybe that this could also transition out at a later point in time. The special purpose districts have been clarified. There's really two. It's the manufactured home and the recreational vehicle park. Really looking at these, making sure that the standards work for what happens within each of these. They're very specialized. They're very use-oriented to it being obviously a manufactured home park or a manufactured home subdivision, or to it being a recreational vehicle park. And what you'll see is that we've really clarified the standards that are part of both of these two districts. Where we really saw a lot of changes, really looking at the overlays and these kind of special districts that existed that kind of tried to get at things that we've built into other districts. So we just wanted to be kind of very transparent in terms of what has happened here. When you look at the development concept and the special overlay, you look at the target area redevelopment overlays. You look at the alternative housing options, and probably the biggest one, the mixed-use overlays. We have incorporated these things into the districts. So it makes it much more easier than having these layers of regulation that allow you to do something that many of the plans and policies and many of the modern development trends want to go towards. We looked at the clustered housing as well as the cottage housing. We've simplified those and created those to be a use with standards regarding their development. So you haven't lost them. You've just had a way to make it much more simpler to apply these. As I spoke about, the uptown-downtown, the streetscape zones, those have been incorporated. You can see them, and they're actually, in terms of the streetscape, still called the streetscape zone, into the commercial and mixed-use districts. And then the ACUs now became, I don't know how you guys are now abbreviating it in speech, the MACOD? Or the Military Compatible Area Overlay Districts. So that has been a transition that we were not part of, that was completed by the city. We also looked at a couple of other of the overlay districts, and you'll see them in their discrete section for overlay districts. We looked at planned unit development and wanted to make sure that it was really being the architecturally and environmentally innovative type of development overlay that it should be. And so really, we just looked to refine those standards. We did talk, if you see in that section, we talked about when being granted this permission to do the PUD, that there must be a demonstration of enhanced design. So you're really looking at things like, are you incorporating sustainable development? Is there affordable or workforce housing part of this? Is there additional preservation of wetlands and floodplains? We've listed some things here that are examples, but the flexibility is really very broad because we understand PUD is applied on a site-by-site basis. And so really, it is, what can that site contribute to be innovative? Can be used as the way to demonstrate that enhanced design. In the historic overlay, we really just reorganized that to fit within what is currently the structure of what we've proposed in terms of the new zoning language. And then finally, we cleaned up some of the island overlay. I know there were some issues with the IO regarding things that it regulated that are no longer allowed to be regulated by Texas state law. So we wanted to make sure that we were compliant with Texas state law, you can see here. Also wanted to eliminate references that really just didn't address kind of things that were objective in nature. So things like the Field Guide to American Houses, which as planners, I think, on our end, the Camero's end, I think we all have this book in our house, but it's not necessarily a zoning book. It's not something that you can objectively evaluate. It's not something that you can objectively evaluate. So we did work with the island folks on this overlay district update, and really tried to build in some quality building design for multifamily, non-residential and mixed-use development on Padre Island, main thoroughfares of Padre Island. I think one of the biggest things you'll see, again, just kind of, it was what we brought forth in December, was the modernized used approach. We eliminated these tables that have use categories, we created discrete uses, we defined each of them. We looked to a more generic use approach, so many things that were very common, such as retail, as you can see here in the graphic example, are dealt with as, you know, a just kind of generic category of retail goods. As you look through that table, you will see we still, those uses that are of concern to Corpus Christi were called out, so we wanted to really make sure that we're still addressing those specific uses. And then just making sure we're addressing both the definition of all of those terms as well as the use standards that are associated. And you'll see in this matrix that we address principal, temporary and accessory uses. And each one of them is now tailored to the purpose of the district. So as you look at the table, again, this is an excerpt from the draft document, you can see as you just go down the column, what is permitted is a P, what's a special permit is an SP, and if the cell is blank, it is prohibited. And what this really does is provides you two ways to understand how uses are dealt with within the city. I can either say I own a piece of property and let's say, as it's pointing here, the SF 4.5, what can I do with that piece of property? And I can look down the column and see what is allowed, what is a special permit, what is prohibited. Or, for example, say I wanted to open an art gallery, I can look across and see which districts would allow me to do just that. So it really provides two ways in, it becomes very business-friendly, very predictable to neighbors to understand exactly what can happen on their property next door to them. We addressed the full range of accessory uses, so you can see here everything from accessory dwelling units to home occupations, to outdoor storage, making sure that we're addressing those, bringing in anything that was special from the island overlay district as well. And then really making sure we address the full range of temporary uses. So this is really everything from, you know, food trucks to contractors' offices to outdoor events, and making sure they have standards and permissions tied to them. We updated the, as part of this, the districts were really, the districts and the uses were really the heart of this project, but we also looked at another series of zoning standards that really influence how development occurs on a lot. So we updated the development standards for accessory structures, kind of bringing in what you currently have now and making sure that we've got specific standards in place for things like garages and mechanical equipment, solar panels, you know, winter binds even, so making sure that the standards are in place for that. We also updated the parking standards. What you'll see now is, as you look at that use table and that list of uses, they now tie to a parking table that provides a ratio for each one of them. So it's very objective in the way it's applied, it really looks at kind of what the parking demand of each of those uses is, reduces interpretation, because if I have this use, I have this parking standard. And as was talked about slightly earlier in a slide, certain districts would be exempt from minimum parking, and this would be the CBD and the CMU because of their more intensive mixed-use nature. We also brought in some parking flexibilities that work with kind of a variety of different things. There was the reduction in the RC district by 50%, which is a current parking flexibility that's in place now. You can see things where permeable pavement allows you a certain reduction, we allowed for the counting of on-street spaces, where you have a multi-tenant development, there's a formula that allows you to kind of look at how all of those uses are used, encouraging cross-access by providing a reduction, allowing for bicycle facilities such as secure bike lockers, employee facilities to allow for a reduction. And in the IO island overlay district only, because we did hear a lot about this, we have allowed for a maximum of up to 10% of the required spaces to be designed to accommodate golf carts, because we understand that's the way people get around on the island. Some additional flexibilities, allowing for off-site parking spaces for residential and non-residential, two standards there, with a couple of caveats regarding whether these, if these spaces are for persons with disabilities, they can't be off-site, because that just makes sense. And then residential uses in the less intense district, the neighborhood commercial, neighborhood office, residential professional and the RC district, that those need to be on the site as well. One of the new standards as added is bicycle parking requirements. This would come in when there's new construction, when the parking lot is fully reconstructed or resurfaced, when a parking lot is abandoned, or expanded by an additional 50% or more of spaces, significant things are happening for multifamily or non-residential uses, and again, non-residential over 10,000 square feet of gross floor area, that in these cases, bike parking spaces would be required to start to build in that bicycle infrastructure throughout the city and really starting with these more intensive developments that would happen. And again, when actions are taking place, not that they have to do it now, if they exist, it's really, again, the parking lots, the new construction, that's when the ordinance would require it, or the code would require it. We also included development standards for landscape and buffer yards. Many of these came in through a lot of the work the city's already done on kind of the street yard landscaping, so really building off of those when there's new development, when existing development takes on certain actions, that this would be brought in. One of the things that we did want to clarify, a couple of these for single family and two-family, they don't need a full landscape plan, the landscaping can be indicated on a site plan. There used to be a requirement that inspection was required every 12 months. We've no longer, we've made this not an annual inspection, but kind of after the first 12 months, we're going to take a look to make sure that it's been properly installed, so providing a little bit more flexibility there as well. So the landscape yards are these recently adopted amendments for trees within the street yards. So essentially, we brought these into these UGC code amendments we proposed. One of the things is, is in the SF 4.5, so that's the one that's 4,500 square feet. We did allow for the flexibility of a tree in the street yard and a tree in the rear yard because of the small size of those lots. Added in some standards regarding parking lot edge landscape, that's where it abuts the streets. Some alternatives, there's some basic landscaping requirement, but if you used a pedestrian wall, you could reduce that to three feet instead of the five-foot requirement. Interior parking lot landscaping on larger lots, these are the ones that are 15 or more spaces, providing parking lot islands, both to kind of issues of stormwater, issues of heat island, this helps to mitigate some aspects of that. And then finally, we've really clarified the buffer yard standards, which when we first initially saw them, were very kind of difficult to navigate and understand. What we've done is reduced this into a set of two tables, so essentially, when certain developments or districts hit another development or district, a certain buffer yard class is required. And really, each of those classes have different planting requirements and different widths. And you can see here, as we look at it, this is the table directly from the code, looking at the buffer yard class, you have A through D. Many of these align with the rear yard requirements of districts when they are abutting things like residential or lower intensity commercial. These would be the planting requirements. And this excerpt from the table shows in which cases, when something's required. So let's say a heavy industrial district does any development and it's abutting something other than another industrial development, it requires that A-class buffer. So that's really, you can see here, we've kind of, that this bigger portion is just an excerpt of the larger table that looks at all the various different ways that incompatible development could abut. And the buffer is required on that more intensive use. So if I am the heavy industrial and I am abutting, say, a multifamily or a single-family district, I am required to put in that buffer when certain actions take place, or if I'm new construction, it's got to be part of my new construction. And with that, we thank you for this opportunity to present the update on the UDC to you tonight, and we would be happy to take any questions that you have. And I will just leave the PowerPoint up on the screen so that we can kind of refer back to any slides, if anybody has any questions on any specific slides we presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do y'all have any questions for our consultant?
I have one. Turn on your microphone.
Yeah, you use your microphone?
Okay. This Commissioner York, just a question, we may have addressed this in the DS tag meetings, but on the buffer zones, do we have language, are we adding language in there that makes it clear that you don't have to do a buffer zone if you're the lesser zoning? In other words, there's been cases where, I'm trying to think of an extreme one, like a single-family home goes to develop and they happen to be next to an industrial that doesn't have a buffer zone, it's been there for years. I think we talked about making sure there was language, so they wouldn't have to put in a buffer zone because it was really just meant to protect them.
Right, so if you see here in the table, so your example just now was the industrial abutting a single family, right?
Well, yeah, anything abutting something to where the other use is really the one that would need the buffer zone, but they happen to already be there.
So this, the way the table's laid out, so it starts here, and hopefully you can kind of see this, I hope it's not too small. You know, the first column here lists the zoning district of the property under development, and the development type required to install the buffer yard. And there's text that explains this too. So if I'm the industrial district and I am required to install a buffer when I'm abutting, say, something in single family, I, the single family is not required to do that buffer, it's the heavy industrial that has to do it. Now, if it's there and doesn't do anything to its lot, then it's there until it does something. Like I said, the reconstruction of the parking lot, new construction, a new building, in which case, that heavy industrial has to install the buffer. So the way that this is set up and the way the text is set up, it's always the more intensive use that is responsible to install that buffer.
Okay, yeah, I thought it was in there, I just wanted to check. Thank you.
Yes.
And then a question for staff, what's the next steps on this? I mean, there's no action, right? This is just a presentation?
Right, this is a briefing this evening. If we have updates related to the draft, we'll bring those forward at our next planning commission meeting. But the idea would be early summer, hopefully in June, to set up a planning commission, city council joint meeting.
Okay, thank you.
For consideration in the public hearing.
Thank you, and I appreciate the presentation.
I have a question. I'm just curious, on the off-street parking standards, you know, the one that says the multi-tenant developments, it already has two or more uses on one site, and you're going to be using a rate based on a formula? I'm just curious, what kind of formula you're going to use, because right now we already have on the multi-tenant, two or more for the parking standards? Tell me a little bit more about what the formula is for the parking.
So if you take a look within the draft on that formula, and I'm flipping to it right, I'm trying to flip to it right now on my copy. It is essentially based, this formula is based on the mix of uses that you have on the site and how, based on historically, we've seen them used. So if you have something like a, you know, a restaurant that is only open in the evening versus, say, a personal services beauty salon that's only open during the day, that formula takes into account the cars that are coming onto the site based on one being more active in the evening and one being more active during the day, and uses, so you can see a whole big formula, it's on, it's within section 7.2, it's 7.2.3 of the draft document, which is also on the website, that shows you how that works out. So the formula is really based on how people are using those businesses that are there to allow for that reduction.
Okay, I was just curious, because I know sometimes when you're dealing with tenants and they have their businesses and some of them start parking on their, in front of their businesses, they just have issues with that, and I was just curious to know how you're reducing that on the formula, but...
It, I will say it's not a great reduction that happens, it seems to provide enough, we've used it in other cities, and it seems to provide enough flexibility. Again, it's also optional, so if somebody would like to provide, you know, more parking, not use the formula, provide more parking than the formula comes up with, there's nothing that prevents that as well, because there's a certain reliance here with these flexibilities that if, you know, a certain development thinks it needs more parking, we're not restricting that, but we're just basically trying to provide flexibility for kind of the reality of sites that are already established, you know, in terms of their size.
Got it, okay, thank you.
I have one quick one. This is Commissioner Munoz. On the PUDs, you have a requirement that it must demonstrate enhanced design. Who's the final decision-maker on if it's enough enhanced design? There's a list of examples of what that could be, but is that going to be a subjective requirement, or is there going to be some, something definitive there?
I can address that. So staff would review it based on these examples of enhanced design, although the developer might also have an attribute for an enhanced design to be considered. And so staff would provide a recommendation to planning commission that's related to the rezoning, if we felt it meets the criteria or not, but ultimately, it would be your recommendation to city council.
Hey, I got a couple of questions. And I know we discussed this the last time we saw this presentation, but can you explain to me again what happens to existing zoning districts that are going to be eliminated, like RS 22 and stuff like that?
So we would have a, we have a transition table that shows what districts will roll over into another district. If for any reason there might be a use that's no longer allowed in that district, that would be a legal non-conforming use.
Okay. And currently, in the downtown overlay, is there any parking requirements?
No off-street parking requirements.
Okay. And I know in a lot of bigger cities and stuff like that, there's, you know, there's no requirements either, however, there's paid parking garages on, you know, every other corner to, you know, be able to assume all of those, you know, parking needs, which we don't really have here, a whole lot of. So is it just something that happens organically as downtown's?
Right, well, what I've seen, well, for example, with the cosmopolitan, it's a wraparound with the parking in the interior, two floors of parking. You know, I would assume that, you know, if there's new construction, they would be, you know, including the parking on site. But there's quite a bit of surface parking downtown as well.
Right.
That's available.
Yeah, I just, I'm curious how other cities have adapted, you know, as the needs grow.
Yeah, maybe Arista can address that as well.
Oh, absolutely. I will say, with downtown, and exempting downtown from requiring parking, is something you see in cities big and villages and towns and cities small. Everybody looks at kind of allowing the downtown forum to really be the star, and really allowing kind of the construction that happens there to really work with the forum and the things that we want to see in downtown. Now, there's no prohibition on parking, which means as things come in, you know, they may provide parking, you know, you have hotels, you may have hotels that continue to provide parking in downtown. But this is a trend we've seen for many, many years now, that when you're looking at your central business district, that you're not requiring any parking.
Right on, yeah, and I figured it would probably happen organically as the need arose, but, you know, we do have several large-scale events that we host in our downtown area, and on those, you know, handful of times per year, parking is very difficult, and I can remember, you know...
Like this Saturday?
Yeah, and Dia de los Muertos and everything else. But, you know, 20 years ago, whenever Chaparral was barricaded on Thursday, Friday and Saturday nights, and, you know, parking was, you know, there was thousands of people convening on, for a good time in downtown Corpus Christi, you know, and I hope those days are on their way back at some point. But, you know, I guess as the need, you know, becomes more and more prevalent, then the private sector will respond with parking solutions. So, that's all I have. All right, well, thank you for your briefing. There will be no further action on this item as it's a briefing, and so we'll be moving on to item seven, director's report.
There's no report for this evening. There's no report for this evening.
All right, well, with that, unless there's any future agenda items that any commissioners would like to put forward, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Fostering a pet means that you take care of the pet until they find a forever home, and can help ensure that each pet finds an ideal home...